We're gonna call this meeting to order on December 11th, 2017. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Stevens.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Compton.
Here.
Trustee Landwehr.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Here.
Trustee Woschiger.
Here.
President Fannerstall.
Here. If you'd all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. If we have any public comments for items that are not on the agenda... Public comments for items that are not on the agenda, uh, there are none. So, we will start the first item on the agenda with a presentation by representatives of Rookert-Milkey of an Infrastructure Investment Achievement Award to the Village of Heartland for its ongoing effort to plan for and invest in the community's infrastructure. The award includes $1,000 donation from Rookert-Milkey to the Heartland Food Pantry.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Stan Sugden. I'm the president of Rookert-Milkey. Uh, we're here tonight, uh, to present the village with our Infrastructure Investment Award. Um, just a little background on the award. Um, we used to have a annual client appreciation event at our office and invite all of our clients there, and, and we found that not everybody could make that. And so we thought, well, what, what's a better way to use that money? And so we thought, let's, let's give it back to the communities that we work in and the ones that are continuously upgrading their infrastructure, um, taking care of, um, the public trust and, and investing in infrastructure. So we, we modified that plan. We no longer have that event. But we go out and I get to do the fun part of, um, passing out a little bit of money. We also let, um, the highest elected official, um, choose, uh, the, uh, the nonprofit that they think is most, most worthy in their community. So, um, you've chosen the Heartland Food Pantry, so we're happy to, to be here to present that award. I'm gonna let Ryan Atman say a few words, um, about some of the projects that we've done in the, in the village, and then we'll present you the check.
Thank you.
So I'm Ryan Atman. I've served as your village engineer since 2008. I can't believe it's been 10 years. It's been an absolute privilege for me, uh, to serve in that role, uh, right here in this community. And, uh, when I thought about this investment in infrastructure award, I really do think we could've given this to you a year or two ago. But I'll just say the last couple of years have been tremendously busy with lots of new infrastructure going in. So I wanted to wait an extra year. Uh, there's three things that I think, uh, are examples of the great job that, uh, this village board, as well as the staff, have done in terms of taking care of its infrastructure. Number one, your road system. You have 45 miles of village-owned streets. That can be a very expensive burden to take care of. Uh, the village, for the last 30 or so years, has committed to a very consistent maintenance program, preventative maintenance. And, uh, that has resulted in the village not having any roads that are rated 1, 2, 3, or 4. And I'll just tell you on a scale of 1 to 10, 1, 2, 3, and 4 is not good. Uh, there's lots of communities in Wisconsin right now during these tough times that have roads in those conditions. You're very fortunate through your commitment over the years, uh, to not have to deal with more expensive road reconstruction. Um, job well done there. Uh, secondly, with your long-range infrastructure planning, uh, the village has had the approach to look at, uh, your entire area, uh, both developed as well as areas that are planned for development through your comprehensive plan. Uh, and you've had a very sound utility, uh, plan for all of those areas. So all the areas that have recently developed on the north edge of the village, up near Bristolcombe Pines, up near Arrowhead High School, have been done with thought in mind 15 or 20 years ago when you decided to run larger sewers out into those areas so that when these developments come, uh, you don't have to have a bunch of pumping stations out there, which are very expensive to take care of. Again, that foresight and long-term vision for your infrastructure has been, uh, very good, uh, for the long term and especially for your residents. Lastly, I just wanted to mention, I see you all have, uh, laptop computers. It looks like you're all going digital. Uh, while the village, uh, 17, 18 years ago committed to its digital infrastructure management system through your GIS. Uh, that's your mapping platform that allows your staff, you as elected officials, and your citizens, uh, to, to do a better job of having access to all the data related to your infrastructure, uh, your zoning, your cemetery records are all within your GIS. And I think that's been, uh, you were one of the first communities, honestly, to, to take that on. And I really think you're seeing the benefits through efficiencies with your staff, as well as access to your citizens to all that data. So job well done. I could go on and on with other examples of, uh, what you as a board, uh, do well, as well as the staff that's keeping your public works and utilities and street networks in, in a great shape. And I'm just here to tell you with all the experience that I have with our firm, uh, that you really have set yourself apart from other communities in terms of how you take care of your infrastructure. So with that, we'd like, uh, President Fannerstall, if you'd come on down. We'd like to present you with this award.
And, uh, on behalf of Rookert-Milkey, presenting you with this check for the food pantry, and appreciate all the, um, all the, uh, work and infrastructure that the village does.
Thank you. It'll go into, uh, good use especially when it starts having that holiday train come through and the fact that they try to raise it to be responsible for, uh, it'll go into good use.
Very good.
At Heartland Food Pantry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening.
Yeah. Thank you very much. In case the mics didn't pick up what I was saying, I was just saying, I think it is outstanding to get that and be able to give it to the food pantry and, you know, provide for our people in need. Uh, the next item on the agenda that we have is the, uh, consideration of motion to approve the village board minutes from the November 27th meeting.
I make motion pass.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Upstate.
That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $321,240.15.
I move repay the bills for $221,240.15.
Don't second. The, uh, new voucher total is 319... We had a voucher that was taken off the list from Waukesha County for dog licenses. They overcharged us.
Good catch.
They will get us that on the next voucher list. 319-879.15.
Yeah, I'll second it for 319-879.15.
Is that okay to do?
Or do you have to amend your amount?
Well, I move that, if, if we don't have to amend it...
There it is.
We're going with, we're, it's been moved and seconded for 319-879.15.
That's correct.
That's the motion. That's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, the next item on the agenda is consideration for actions related to the licenses and permits. Consideration for the, um, operators' licenses with a term ending June 30th, 2018. Uh, the bartenders' licenses are for Veronica Jean Church, Jose Manuel Sandoval, Corey Nicole Brauch, and Stephen Ryan Keeling.
I'll move to approve the licenses as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion's carried. Those licenses are granted. Next, we have a street use permit for large-scale events. We have the Lighthouse Event 5K/10K Run on February 18th, 2018, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Uh, Police Chief, Public Works Director, and Fire Chief recommend approval.
I move we approve the event.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the event. Um, and, any discussion?
I do have one question. What is the Lighthouse Event? I'm not familiar.
Uh, the Lighthouse Event is, let me pull up the...
4K.
Yes.
Run out by...
But what...
Who is the Lighthouse?
Who is Lighthouse?
Uh, I, I, hold on, I'll pull it. Lighthouse Events is the organization that is pulling the permit. So I am not very familiar with the organization, but the applicant, the person request, or the organization requesting application says Lighthouse. I didn't look into who they are.
They've done, uh, they, uh, I don't know that they're necessarily affiliated with the school, but they have done a number of events in here, and I remember looking them up in the past. Uh, and they're essentially a race organizer. And they just create and do races, running races.
Where do the funds go?
Um, that's, I don't remember exactly anymore, but I will look it up.
It's at Lake Country School. Um...
Oh, maybe it's for Lake Country.
Lake Country Lutheran.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Lake Country Lutheran, yes. But, sorry. Thank you for catching that. Those are two different schools. Um, we could get more information if you want it.
Well, I'd like to know where the funds are going. You know, and is it going to the school? Is it going to somebody's pocket, or what, you know, where's it going?
Yeah, in all actuality, it does not say. Uh, to describe the event, it just says, and this is a tough one, actually. Maybe you got a good point here, Rick, but it says, "Same as previous year, taking place, Lake Country Lutheran High School, a 5K and 10K run take place." That's what it says when they describe the event, so I, I don't know where those...
You know, in the past, all of the runs we've approved, we've never asked where the funds went.
Right.
It's not part of the, the application questionnaire.
Normally, it's obvious, and it's, you know, it's...
Is that something that we should maybe amend our form and ask?
Plus, this one's on Hartford, too. So it's not a motion.
I'm not sure. I haven't run into it a lot, so I'd, it'd be, you guys would be much better ju, you know, judging on, uh... I, I, it wasn't even something that came to mind for me, so I don't know. Um, uh, it's definitely something if this board would like to do in the future, we could talk about. Uh, but for this license, I mean, I don't know, would we hold the license up depending on where the funds are going?
No, but...
In the future, I'd, I'll, I'll accept now, but in the future, I'd like to know a little more information of where, you know... I've never heard of Lighthouse except here, I think.
Okay, and I think that, uh...
Well, maybe they're like a fundraiser brought in by the high school, but we don't know that from the application.
I think we can either have staff reach out, or if you wanna call in, I think that we can find out from them.
Like I say, right now, it's, uh, drop my question, but, uh, it's just curious.
I just, well, no, but we could get the information, so I just wanted to...
Then you want the form amended for future events?
Well, there's nothing to amend. It's just, you know, in the future...
Well, no, no, not for this, but for, we could have on the permit, it's saying, you know, who's, uh...
We could put on a, we could put on an agenda down the road if we wanna change the, if we wanna change the permit, but...
Well, just add a paragraph into the application, then you got it.
Right, but right now, what we're voting on is whether we're gonna grant this one. But yes, we could definitely put it on agenda to talk if we wanna change that form.
Well, it says sponsoring agent, agency. It says Lighthouse Events. Okay, so that's them. If you wanna have, who are they? Who is the sponsoring event? I mean, they have to give some litany of who they are. Fine, but I mean, Lighthouse Events, I mean... That doesn't tell us anything. But does it? We're not, at, we're, since when do we, uh, have anything to say about the people that are running events? If we approve the, if the police approve the, the event, then we have no problem with it. Does it matter, you know, who, who it is?
Do the police know if they've approved it or who it is?
Well, they've approved, they've approved the signage and the...
The Department of Public Works, the Fire Chief, and the Police Chief has recommended approval. If I'm not mistaken, in fact, it looks like we might, uh...
So we've all approved it, but nobody knows who they are?
Fire have all approved.
Chief Begon, how familiar are you with this organization, with this fraud?
What we look at is where they wanna go, and is the event a normal customary type of event to do? So if they're gonna use the roadway, if they're gonna use, um, you know, depending on time of day, things that we look for, things which might be disruptive to traffic, things which might be disruptive to the community. But if they're not, we don't necessarily...
So you don't care what the organization is?
No, as long as it's not something that would be illegal or overly disruptive to the village.
Do you want any Lighthouse sighting of his there or in Delphill?
Well, it says it's on there.
Yeah, we're trying, I'm trying to find some information, but it's, the, the who is generally irrelevant. It's what, and when, and where.
That's what it's saying.
Uh-huh. For our purposes.
I believe Lighthouse is the ones that bring the starting line and the finish clock. They're the, the race organizers that bring all the supplies in for the, uh, racing to start. And then they have the timer and the camera at the end for the photo finish.
Right. And they hand out probably the numbers that have the trackers in there.
I believe the...
So then who's at court?
I don't wanna, I believe it's Lake Country Lutheran, but I don't wanna...
Well, it's kind of a wacky way to do it.
Well, all you gotta do is put a paragraph on it if this comes up again, because you're gonna ask the same question if somebody comes up.
But that, and that would, that's something that we can discuss for in the future, but right now, we're wondering if we're gonna approve this permit. That's what's on the agenda.
Why, I'm, did we...
Didn't we already make a motion?
Did we make a motion?
The motion was made.
You do.
And seconded.
Randy and Ann.
Okay. Randy, okay. Sorry, I lost track. Um, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the second reading of bill for an ordinance number 112717-01, an ordinance to amend Chapter 46 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to zoning ordinance.
Nothing to do there. The ordinance hasn't changed. You have a public hearing on this matter on the 8th of January.
Yep.
So then you give it to them.
Can't do it then.
It's just the reading.
Or if they do it tonight, then you wouldn't have a meeting.
Notwithstanding the need for a public hearing.
Right, right. Uh, next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution 12112017-01, a resolution establishing reporting for wards 13 and 14 in the Village of Heartland, Waukesha County, Wisconsin. Uh, during, I guess, county elections, it's come to my attention that we, uh, have to create these resolutions that go for these two wards because of that end up.
I move we pass the Resolution 12112017-01.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried. Or I should say that resolution's adopted. Uh, next item is a consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution Number 12112017-02, resolution approving our municipal court budget.
I'm move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, it's, you know, we have to go and approve this all the time. We never get the actual dollars that is still, uh, at least accounts receivable. It's, I've heard up to 8 to 15 million dollars of unreceivable money as far as, on tickets and things like that. Uh, the judge that was here last time didn't have any idea what we're talking about. Um, I would just like to have some information on, on how they're doing. Are we getting any better in collecting some of those fees?
So the, what you're asking about is the fees that we have not yet collected. They're still outstanding?
That's up to our Police Chief.
Hi.
He's kidding. He's gotta be gone.
Um, a figure of about 130,000, I believe, is where we still are outstanding.
That's our...
For just Heartland.
For the Village of Heartland. It's somewhere roughly around there, according to what I was told last time. Are we getting better? They are getting better at collecting by using a collection agency. Um, obviously, we lose some money to that when they do collect. And I think maybe some of you would recall, one of the little highlights in one of these staff updates this past fall was that we collected some funds that were from over 10 years ago, um, through the collection agency. So the effort is there. It's still, um, only as good as the process and finding the people.
So the judge explained that last year and the year before, he said, "Oh, what a hard job that is to get those funds," and they were working on it, so...
It's my, it's my understanding that what they do is exactly like Chief Begon was alluding to, was that they get a, they get an agency, a credit collection agency, and they'll do the normal things that are, you know, it's contracted out, but they do the normal, uh, business that a collection agency would do. Above and beyond that, they don't do a lot. So technically, obviously...
Are different than criminal charges. Criminal charges, you can hold for bail as the incentive to come back to court. Typically, for a municipal citation, if the person resides in the state of Wisconsin and has ties to Wisconsin, either a residence, a job, uh, driver's license, they are issued the citation and they go on their way. So there's really no guarantee or nothing to, a bail perhaps to ensure that they come back. If they're from out of state or do not have ties to this state, then, uh, we will hold them, we'll, we'll get bail money on the citation. But so once you release them, you're at the, at the whim of hoping they show up and then take care of the citation.
So you're figuring where 100, like 100,000 dollars?
It's about 130,000, I believe, is the figure.
Next year, will we, we can account for that below, right?
Well, we hope, but we don't know for sure.
1.4 million?
What's that?
Is it the whole court, 1.4 million?
I don't have that number, but, but I mean, we're only one of many communities, and we're at that level. So similar-sized communities could be of equal, you know, equal amounts, so...
Well, the judge, he explained that two years ago or something, and we asked the same thing. And he says it's, it's, you gotta change the laws up in the state or do something, which I imagine he's working on that or something.
They just have no repercussion.
Well, I mean, it can't get up.
In most cases, but that doesn't mean we can't seek more information, um, as Mike saw.
Generally, the judge comes in the spring.
Mm-hmm.
Ask him then.
Well, he did already, and then he told us just what the chief did.
Don't take this for me.
So we have the, uh... It's been, it was, it was moved and seconded, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, next item on the agenda, we have the, uh, consideration of a motion to approve the industrial service agreement, um, regarding the wastewater discharges with Medline Industries, Inc.
Also. Oh, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have items related to Hawkshaven subdivision in the town of Delphill. Um, the first one is a consideration of a motion to approve a reduction in the letter of credit for the Hawkshaven subdivision.
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Good evening, Mike Daniel, Public Works Director. Uh, before you is a letter of credit reduction for the completion of the sanitary sewer system and the portion of the storm sewer system that flows to the village. The village engineer and staff have looked these over and find that they are acceptable and are recommending the reduction to 10% of the original letter of credit, which will be in place for two years for the guarantee period.
Alright. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, and the next part of that is a consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution 12112017-03, a resolution accepting public improvements in the Hawkshaven subdivision.
I so that we adopt Resolution 121117-3. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Uh, next item is a consideration of a motion to approve the ordering and purchase of the Ford F-350 pickup truck as specified for the Public Works Department from Badger Truck Center of Milwaukee in the amount of $31,150, and to declare as surplus and authorize the disposal of the 2003 Ford pickup truck upon receipt of the replacement vehicle.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what use do we have for 350? I have never seen a large trailer or heavy equipment being towed by any of our vehicles except dump trucks. That 350 gets about 7 miles a gallon, and, uh, I haven't seen anybody towing anything heavy with anything we've got.
Uh, we have a number of items that we put on trailers. We have the mowers. Uh, we have the trench shield for the, uh, excavations. Uh, we can also tow the, uh, new mini excavator, uh, the mini excavator.
I'll tow all that with a 150. There's no call for a 350. That's way overkill. And that's for towing bulldozers and road graders and everything. Uh, I think that, uh, you're asking for something that's, uh, way overkill. Even an F-250 would be, would be more acceptable.
Well, based on what the, uh, staff had mentioned to Badger Ford on what we needed, they recommended this.
Well, of course they did. I'd recommend it too if I was at sales and there's more bucks. But an F-350, I've driven an F-250 towing with, uh, a fifth-wheel trailer with two trac, three tractors on it, all the way to Madison back, and I had no problems. And you're just towing around town. I see no use of a 350. It's, like I said, the gas mileage is horrible, and I just see these guys driving around town, checking things in that thing and just burning gas up. But I had not seen anything towed in this village that would require a 350.
Well, as I mentioned, we are trailering the mini excavator. It does have a large trailer. I don't have the weight with me tonight to explain exactly what the total weight of that trailer is. I'd be happy to get that information for you.
I've got an F-250, and I can hold over 10,000 pounds.
And that excavator does not weigh that. But I just think it's overkill, and, uh, I'm experienced in that kinda stuff, and it's overkill.
Do you guys wanna hold off till we have more info on this, on the weight of what we're gonna be, um...
Can we downsize it?
Well, then you... Not on the fly, but...
We can make, we can put this off, is what I'm saying. If the board wants more information...
I think, I think more research should be done on this because if, uh, you know, of course the Ford dealer recommended the 350. Have you got any 350s out there now?
Yes, we do have, uh, I believe, at least two or three. I don't have the, uh, link information.
Need a fourth one. You know, it's, uh, it's, no, I'm totally against an F-350.
Okay. One of the reasons why we did bring it before the board tonight was to get it on the special orange paint line. Ford only runs that at some times during the year, and this way, we would be insured of getting it painted. Otherwise, we might have to wait quite a while till they have enough orders for more orange trucks.
But don't we have a white, a couple of white trucks out there now?
Those are the water utility trucks.
We used to have a silver one.
Right, and that was painted to match the orange fleet, because they didn't have an orange line going at that time. And we needed a replacement, so...
Well, I don't think we should push it through just because of the color.
Well, I think you should check on the price.
Sounds like we need some more information. We don't have the weight of what we're hauling, and I think it's totally advisable that if people in the board want more info, we can hold it off for more.
33,000 for a new pickup isn't much when you go look for, a kid looking for a pickup.
I'm looking at the maintenance side. Seven miles a gallon.
But I mean, if, uh, you know, I don't know.
And if it's not being used or just driven around to see if the streets are clean, uh, it's not worth it.
And if we've already got how many? Three, three?
Well, I would have to double-check on the, I don't have the inventory.
We have at least several.
So we don't really need it?
I'm thinking maybe two, but I would have to double-check that.
Mike, could you, um, could you do that for, find out what we're gonna be towing? Find out the weight? Find out the date on the paint line so that we have that as well, just, I mean, so we know whether or not that's going to hit the orange line? Uh, and also the other information that each one is alluded to. And if you have any questions, just reach out, you know, ask them what, if they need more information. I think that sounds like it's the way that it's going, but...
That's no problem, Rick.
But we still would need a motion.
Different, a different price, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the mileage, I think that's what Rick is kinda saying.
Do we wanna wait and approve it in January, or do we wanna give staff latitude to...
No, we can wait till June.
No, you're gonna have to wait. How can you get...
Yeah.
Staff wants 350.
Well...
You gotta wait till June, till January.
Forget about the paint, just table it.
We'll just wait for a, for a motion. I mean, if that's how we're doing it.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried to table the pickup truck to DPW. Next item on the agenda... Oh, I'm sorry that I lost my place. I'm getting there. Consideration of a motion to approve the ordering and purchase of a Lifeline ambulance as specified in the Fire Department from Jefferson Fire and Safety of Middleton in the not-to-exceed amount of $248,251, and to declare as surplus and authorize the disposal of the 2008 Road Rescue ambulance upon receipt of the replacement vehicle. Um, as you guys will remember, this was an item that came up before us. We already should have ordered this. I requested that the board tabled it because there was some additional info for certain reasons, uh, that we had to look into. We have gotten a report. The administrators looked into it. Uh, everything that we've needed to do, we've looked into.
You know what you gotta do? You gotta take it off the table, but for now, we're going into discussion. I know we change rules as we go along. After tabled at last board meeting, in order to discuss it.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Take it off the table. Excuse me, but we should get back to procedure.
Make a motion.
So I move that we're on table now.
Second.
The ambulance purchase.
It's been moved and seconded to purchase the ambulance in the amount of.
It's on table.
I, on table.
Oh, to, oh, I'm sorry, to untable it. Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? It's off the table. So now we have the item that I was discussing. So now we can have a motion to purchase.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Lifeline ambulance as specified by the fire department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. I'm sorry, I'm sorry about not knowing to pull it off the table. I assumed since it was on the agenda that that meant it automatically was coming off of the table, but I'm, I apologize for that. So. Next item is the, uh, consideration of actions related, um, to appointing of a new assessor. Um, for the board to vote on is a consideration of a motion to confirm the village president's appointment of Grota Appraisals LLC as village assessor.
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That, uh, motion is carried. Next item is, next part of that item is a consideration of a motion to approve a four-year contract with Grota Appraisals LLC for the assessor services in the not-to-exceed amount of sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars annually.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item is a consideration of a motion to approve an amendment to the contract with the Heartland Professional Police Association to incorporate the general wage adjustment approved in the two thousand eighteen village budget.
I'll so move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item is the consideration of a motion to appoint elech, election inspectors with terms expiring ten thirty-one twenty nineteen.
I'll so move.
You want to read all those names?
I don't, but I was going, I was going to, I mean, it's, sometimes I gotta be careful to, you know? So I'm glad we have a long list. They have all been, uh, made public through our agenda packet. You can go and look at it.
I believe we do.
Yes, we do. When you get to the pres, the presidential or the governor's, we use all of them. Okay. Because we do shift, so they work half-days.
I don't know. I was saying, I believe. I didn't, I was asking.